All right, welcome everyone. This is a regular meeting of the Arlington City Council. It is January 17th. Supposed to start at 6:30. We're a little late, 6:45. So we'll start the meeting and please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America. And unto the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That looks very nice whoever fixed it for the healthy.
Thank you and welcome everyone again. I'm Mayor Rich Nagel. I'll be presiding at the meeting. First thing we'll do is have roll call. Councilmember Batcher.
Here.
Councilmember Yashewski.
Here.
Councilmember, I was gonna say Highland. Highland.
Here.
Councilmember Call.
Here.
Councilmember Haddelstedt.
Here.
All here. Also on my left, City Administrator Donabauer. On my right, City Attorney Arnison. And joining us tonight representing Arlington Enterprise is Kurt Mink. And also our interim police chief, Jordan Voight. Welcome fellows. The agenda we have in front of you is there a motion to 20 percent? Item G, accept resignation of Jason Miller, volunteering by Councilmember Yashewski to approve the consent agenda as read. All in favor say aye. Oppose no. Motion carried.
... budget items affecting those that are being covered by ambulance and fire services. City out of the February 3rd Southwest Corridor Transportation Coalition meeting at the Chaska City Hall. And then just to backtrack a little bit, the December and year-end financial reports, it did provide a summary in your packet and just so that those that are listening, our total expenditures came in under budget for the year at 96 percent. And our total revenues came in over budget by 3 percent. I would be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions regarding the communications? I would encourage those of you that schedule will allow to join Liza at that Southwest 212 Coalition meeting.
Yeah, I think I may be able to fit it in.
Great.
Are you wanting to travel jointly?
We can. I think the meeting starts at 7:30.
7:30.
Yeah, 7:30, so we could meet.
But where's it at?
In Chaska.
Chaska City Hall.
In what?
You can meet me in Coney. Get a cup of coffee.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Otherwise we'll move on to ordinances.
All right, so this is where we're gonna lean on City Attorney Arnison. He's been working diligently on codifying our ordinances. And tonight he has Chapter 1 and 2 to review with you.
And I'm gonna read through them word by word. Just to set the background, especially for new councilmembers, Arlington, like most cities, enacts laws in the form of ordinances. And at some point, it makes a lot more sense to organize those into a city code, which is allowed by state law. The problem with these scattered ordinances is, first of all, they're not in any coherent order. So ordinance 201 is typically on a completely different subject than ordinance 202. The second issue or problem is when you have a city that's been around for 100 years or more, you, 150 years, you have all of these old ordinances that may have been outdated, rendered void by state law, and/or amended or replaced by newer city ordinances. So you've got quite a mishmash there. As an example of outdated ordinances, actually, these are a couple that have been voided already, but just for your amusement, there was an ordinance on books that women were not allowed in pool halls. And there was another ordinance that said you can't slaughter chickens on Main Street. So those were the two big ordinances 100 years ago. Anyway, so that's just an example that as time goes by, some of the older ordinances get very stale or as they say, have been amended or superseded. And so codifying the ordinances is not only a way of organizing those in subject chapters and sections, but also to slough off all of the older ordinances. As an example, one that's been a real thorn in our side is the set of nuisance ordinances. We've changed those many times over the years, added and subtracted. And I wanna say that the new nuisance chapter supersedes something like 21 old ordinances that we have on the books. So it's a way of really streamlining the city's laws. And the way that we propose to present it to the council is, I'm gonna email you out one or two or three chapters at a time, depending on how long they are, so that you can have a little time to digest them. And what I'm planning to do is send them out at least a week ahead of time. I didn't do it this time, but beginning of the year is always really chaotic at the office. But from here on in, I plan to send them out at least a week ahead of time, so you can look them over and then discuss them and answer any questions you might have at the next meeting. And as you recall, the usual pattern is to have a first reading of an ordinance, and then a second reading at a subsequent meeting, and then the adoption. Well, in this case, the way we're gonna approach this is, as each chapter is presented to you at that next council meeting, it'll be considered a first reading of that particular chapter or chapters. And we'll keep doing that. The next section of chapters will have a first reading. And as we get through all of them, then we'll, at the very end, have the second reading of the whole code. If that makes sense. And then Liza has already drafted a proposed ordinance to then adopt the code. Okay? And the adoption of the code also serves to void all the old ordinances. Questions on that process?
Others, some ordinances, old ordinances, I'm sure you're looking over to make sure they're pertinent with what's going on here.
And that's what's taken so much time.
Yeah. So I can, once these are adopted, I can slaughter chickens on Main Street.
Yep, you should be able to.
Yep. Well, actually, you can right now. That was taken off the books some years ago. And after great debate, the ordinance about women barred from pool halls, that was taken off too.
I'd love to have been there for that debate.
Were they winning too much?
Yeah, that could be it, yes. I don't know.
They didn't want their wives hanging around there.
No, no, that was the man cave.
So everything will be under animal control? All the ordinance that are pertinent to this time will be under that category, under that chapter?
So does it leave our ordinances intact, or does it just generalize?
All ordinances will be voided.
So it will just be?
The code.
A code?
Yes. But what you'll find, especially a lot of the newer ordinances, a good example is the liquor ordinance. As you know, we've done a lot of work on that in the last few years and made several amendments. So that one is very fresh. And so the code section for the liquor control, basically we're just gonna plop that current ordinance in as a chapter. But then all of the older ordinances that have been superseded, those will be voided. But the newest ordinance is also voided. In other words, we don't have a separate ordinance on the books. We've got a chapter of the code. Okay? So we're not doing away with the ordinance, we're just making it a chapter of the code. But then the ordinance is not freestanding anymore. It's part of the code.
So moving forward, when we, because I'm assuming we will be creating new ordinances or changing?
Or we'll do one every week.
Or changing, or will we be changing the code?
We'll be changing the code.
So we'll be doing both? We'll be?
We'll pass an ordinance to change the code, basically.
Okay.
Yeah.
So will the term ordinances go away eventually?
Well...
Or will it still be used as much as we're using it now?
Yeah, that's a good question. I guess...
I guess, as I was gonna say, at the City of Clearwater, we would still adopt the ordinances. And at the end of the year, then all the ordinances would be forwarded to be codified. So we did still adopt ordinances.
That sounds like a good way to do it, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and among other things, we don't wanna keep redrafting the code. So maybe, yeah, do that once a year and just have a code amendment at the end of the year. Okay, yes?
Yeah, 'cause if we have both, we still have ordinances, we still will have ordinances.
Start two readings.
But the code, to me, from reading so far, the couple first chapters, is more just in layman's terms, right? So it's just easy to get the general understanding of what's...
Well, we always try and draft them that way, yeah. But I would say it's more a way of organizing our body of law, not necessarily simplifying it. Well, it's simplifying it in the sense that it's more accessible. You know, instead of saying, well, let's dig through the old books and see how many ordinances pertain to chickens in Arlington. Well, now you just go to a chapter and say, okay, chickens. And there it is.
Okay.
Is it going to get to the point, or would someone accessing the webpage, city webpage, website, be able to search for a particular item?
Yes.
In other words, if they wanna know what animals, what pets are allowed in town, maybe use the pets and it would...
That's our goal.
Okay.
Yes. And also, of course, the index would be available, so they can look at the index and then just go to that section.
Okay.
Looking at chapters names is pretty easy to figure out what's gonna be there.
Yeah. And there wasn't any technical reason for the chapters that I put together. I guess my approach was, the organizational chapters I put at the beginning, the charter ordinances regarding the council and committees. And then I went a little bit alphabetical, not completely, but, and then some of the shorter subjects, we put down in the miscellaneous at the end. And I hesitated to do that, but I thought, well, I think we can make that clear. If you go into the miscellaneous chapter, well, here's where the animal control part is. I could've made each of those under miscellaneous a separate chapter of its own, but then you're getting an awful lot of chapters. So that was my thought process, but there's nothing magical about that. And I certainly welcome if anybody thinks we can organize that index in a different That wouldn't be hard to change. Okay, and the first two chapters, very, very simple. The first one, general provisions. This is kind of a standardized canned intro to codes. And I got this language largely from something that the league provides. And it just talks about the authority under which we're doing the code, and how it's gonna replace the ordinances, and definitions, terms, blah, blah, blah. And if anybody had any questions about it, oh, and by the way, we can always come back. In other words, we're presenting the first two chapters tonight. If six meetings from now, you have a question back on Chapter 1, fine, let's go back to it. But this one, I guess I don't think requires a lot of comment, because it is kind of a stand, canned, standardized intro. I did modify it from what the league provided to me. There were some parts that just weren't relevant to Arlington, and so I just edited it somewhat. And likewise, Chapter 2 is also very simple. That's the city charter. And in my email to you, I explained what the role of the charter is and so on. And this is something that we can't change without a very special procedure. As I mentioned in my email, it's sort of like changing the U.S. Constitution. You know, you gotta go through a lengthy process to do so. And it includes having the district court judge appoint 15 citizens as a charter commission. And Brother Lowell was the chairman of the last one. So you can ask him when that was. I don't remember.
Well, I do remember in looking at the charter that the three of us were given, you know, when we took office, that that one has a signature on by Dick Thomas or Dave Check or something like that. So there must have been changes made at that time.
Yes. But what happens is, the district court appoints the commission. Well, we give the court the names. You know, we recruit 15 volunteers and give the names to the court. And then they do their thing, they have meetings. Typically, the changes are initiated by the council. You know, the council says to the commission, we think the charter needs to be amended in this way, and this is why. But then the commission mulls it over, and then makes its recommendations back to the city council, which then can adopt the changes. And the two that I remember, since I've been city attorney, were both primarily to update the charter in various ways, to conform with changes that took place in state law. And then maybe over the period of time, it was found that some parts of the charter just weren't worded very clearly. Or in a few cases, it's where the city decided that there was a provision that just wasn't working very well. Or there maybe was a need for a provision that wasn't in there to begin with. But I would say that in the two charter changes that I was involved in, there wasn't any major change to it. And I guess I haven't perceived, and certainly the council hasn't perceived, over the last however many years that's been, you know, like 10 years or 15 years?
15, probably. 15. I think so.
That there were any need for any new changes. And so I don't anticipate we're gonna be doing that anytime soon. But again, it isn't within the purview of the council to edit this. That's my point. So basically, we made the charter into a Chapter 2 of the code, but it stays the way it is. Okay? Now, having said that, it'd be useful for you to read through this, and certainly you can pose any questions you have about it to me. And after reading it, maybe this council will decide, gee, maybe there is something in the charter that we should be considering changing. But since it is a long, involved process, we don't go through that to move a comma from one place to another. It's gotta be worthwhile to go through it. So any questions or comments on Chapters 1 and 2?
I did have a few, if nobody else wants to stop in. Just on Chapter 1, just very minor, on that first page, under title of code C. Just, you use an example of any component code may be referred to and cited by its name, such as traffic code. And I didn't know if we wanted to match it to one of our actual titles.
Well, I guess I didn't call it traffic code, did I?
Traffic and parking.
Yeah. That's my point. I'll change that to traffic and parking. Yes.
And then under general provisions, so it'd be, is it fifth page? Under 1.18 copies of code. I know we like to use the language when we're talking about fees, and we always reference it to the council can amend their resolution or fee resolution. I don't know if we wanna direct it toward...
So it should provide a copy for sale for...
I can look for an...
A charge based on the current city fee schedule.
Mm-hmm. Is adopted by council on a as-needed basis. I can look for the wordage that we've been using before that.
Good.
So that's for Chapter 1. I don't know if anybody had any. And then I know we can't change our city charter, but I guess I had a...
You can't even talk about something.
I have a couple questions.
Fuck how we were.
For instance, you know, on the first page, talking about our boundaries and powers of the city, I would imagine that described land and territory doesn't include our most recently annexed areas, like the silage pit.
Oh, good point. And that, this does not include anything except the original city boundary. And we addressed that in the past. And basically, this was an enabling provision when the code was first adopted, whenever that occurred, 1858, whatever. And in order to make it a valid code, they had to describe the city boundary at that time. And so that's not something that, as I understand it, and I know I checked with the league about this many decades ago, and they said, nah, that kind of thing, you just leave it the way it is. You don't keep, well, in fact, of course, since it requires this big rigmarole to change the charter, you know, the charter commission and blah, 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 that'd be very cumbersome if we had to do that every time we did another annexation. So, no, that's a good catch, but that is deliberate. That is the original city boundary in 1858, whatever it was, 57?
58 is when the state was.
58, okay, thanks.
Same day as when Minnesota was state.
Oh, that's right. Yes, that's right.
And then on the fifth page, the first paragraph, we just made this change recently due to our auditor's requirements on segregation of duties. The description in our charter states that the deputy clerk shall countersign all checks. And now we involve our mayor or vice mayor to sign, and the city administrator...
Where is this? One, two, three, four, five.
Mm-hmm. It's the first paragraph at the top.
Top, wait, top.
Says the city administrator shall perform. So I'm referencing the...
Quite deputy clerk to assist in performance of administrative duties?
It's the last sentence. The deputy clerk shall countersign all checks. And that...
Oh, I see.
And that is no mayor or vice mayor.
Mm-hmm. And the city administrator, or in my absence, yes, the deputy clerk would countersign, but I didn't know if it...
Yeah. Well, to be technical, I guess, we're supposed to follow our charter. On something like this, though, it's really a kind of administrative detail that I just don't see any issue with, you know, you adopt that new policy.
Okay. And we did make the change via resolution at the beginning of the year.
Yeah. Now, now that I look at this, that was one of the changes we made at the last charter commission. It was always city clerk, and we changed that term to city administrator throughout the whole charter. So that was an example of what we did the last time.
And then five pages later, five pages later, page 10, the paragraph C, submission of budget and council action on budget.
Is this under 2.09?
2.08.
2.08, and what subsection?
C and D.
C and D, okay. Yep.
And so it specifically cites that the city administrator shall recommend and submit to the council a budget by September 1st. I think that's cited in both paragraphs. And due to the state changing its budget schedule, so the budget used to be due by September 15th of each year, and I think the year I started, they moved that back to the last day in September. So therefore, the council looks at that budget at one of their meetings in September, which is, does not fall before September 1st. So I guess, I was a little alarmed when I read that.
So it was a case where state law has changed.
Yeah, yeah. Oh, and by the way, state law does supersede the charter anyway, where there's a conflict. So I think that probably covers that, as well as...
Okay.
Yeah.
And that's all I had.
Just one other comment on the charter. I've given you some data that I think like 107 cities are charter cities and 700 and something are statutory cities. For example, Green Isle's a statutory city, but on a practical day-to-day basis, there's almost no difference. It's just that if a city, as Arlington did initially, decide to go the charter route, you have a little bit more local control over how things are organized. Whereas if you're a statutory city, it's completely controlled by whatever the legislature does. So having said that, though, obviously, although we have a charter, we're also still subject to state statutes. Okay? Now, there are a few areas, though, where if we have adopted a charter, state statute does not apply. But most of the state statutes do. So that's why there isn't that big a difference between a charter city and a statutory city. The biggest charter city, as I recall, is St. Paul. And I can't give you a historical explanation for why they decided to be a charter city, Questions, comments? Otherwise, I guess I'd suggest the council consider this the first reading of the Chapter 1 and Chapter 2 of the code.
Okay, any additional questions, comments? If not, that will be considered the first reading of Chapter 1 and Chapter 2 of the And we look forward to more.
Yes.
Okay, moving on to number nine, or item 9 resolutions. There are none. We'll move on to, or there is no unfinished business either, so we'll move on to new business, item 10.
So before you tonight is the pay estimate number 8, which is the final pay estimate for the 2015 street and utility improvement project. The final payment is in the amount of $80,784.74 to W.M. Mueller &amp; Sons. It did provide a copy of that request, as well as a summary of the project, just so that you could kind of get a little background. The contract price for this project was at $1,639,737.25. And the council did adopt or approve four change orders, which brought the contract amount up to $1,671,382. However, the final project cost came to less than that at 1.6, so $1,607,980.85. City engineer Jason Femrite explained that that was due to less than anticipated quantities of concrete or product or whatever was needed for that project. So it came in slightly less than what was estimated and contracted. He did note that there is a warranty, that the time clock starts two years from the final payment, so that would happen tonight. That does not cover turf establishment. And then I contacted Shannon Sweeney, our financial guru from David Drawan Associates, to ask about that surplus, because we bonded for that project cost. Therefore, if the contract came in less than that, then what happens with those surplus funds? And he had mentioned that we'd be working with our auditor on that. The surplus could be handled in one of two ways, and that is, it could, surplus could be transferred into the corresponding debt service accounts, so for the next 15 years, as the council is budgeting or levying for the debt levy portion of that. It could be less than what was projected in the document that our council approved. Or we transfer the proceeds into a project of similar nature, which, given we have a 2017 street and utility improvement project, so the surplus could be rolled into that, which would minimize the total amount that would be bonded for that project. So, any questions?
I do. And so they, there's no guarantee or warranty on the turf. I know there was always, there was issues even up through this fall about the drainage by Senex and by the practice field heading towards the creek. Now, was all that taken care of, or was there more, or is that still an issue?
So I spoke with project superintendent Derek Olinger from Bolton and Mink, and he had said that in the... So I spoke with project superintendent Derek Olinger from Bolton and Mink, and he had said that in the late fall, they did try, or they did attempt to regrade that area down there. They also applied another layer of seed, a blanket seed down in that ditch area, as well as applied seed along the areas that you talked about in front of the football field. And there was a resident over there as well that had issues. So, um, we'll be able to see whether that took in the spring. Our Derek Olinger did contact the resident who had some complaints, and they agreed to stay in contact with each other that if it did not come out to the resident's satisfaction this spring, that more work would be done to complete that. As far as that ditch, he did note that we had a, you know, obviously a more wet than normal summer, so, yes, that ditch will retain water when we do have a lot of water. For instance, this spring, when we have the melt, that we will see water there. However, if it's a ongoing issue that the council is not happy with, then we can talk about other options, whether we install drain tile throughout there, but.
So was it designed to have water standing in there?
That I cannot answer.
Well, I guess, I mean, I, I don't, I don't know if we would have designed a, a ditch like that right by Senex to retain water. I mean, I would think that it would be designed that it would drain, right? That, that's the only thing that's holding me up.
I think under normal rainfall amounts, so we think about this last summer, I mean, we had rain every four days.
Right, but not all ditches had water in them, sitting in them. So that seemed to be a problem, problem area. So, and I know the reason why we hold on to these final payments is to make sure that everything is done right. The only thing that I would hesitate on is if, um, if that would be covered underneath our warranty, that ditch work. But if it's not, then, then I, I can't, I can't approve the payment.
And I can't answer how it was to be designed, so I couldn't give you an answer.
Or if it would be covered underneath the warranty.
Right.
Or if that could be a contingency on, on our payment, if that would be covered, so that it would be drained.
I know I talked to Derek, uh, a little bit the other night at the open house, and he, he said they, you know, they tried their best to get some slopes so that would all drain out. Uh, he said it's a very flat area. And he said, you know, it's, you can, you can never get it perfectly sloped. I mean, it just, you know, they, he felt they, uh, not that they wouldn't, you know, come back in if it was still deficient, but I think what he was saying is, uh, it's going to be hard to get it perfect. Uh, there is a point where, if you look at that ditch, it does have good slope after a certain point. But this is back, you know, by Senex. Yeah, so, um, I don't know.
But if, but if Senex didn't have the problem before this project.
Mm-hmm.
And they have it now, why, you know.
Mm-hmm.
There's something there that could be remedied, I'd imagine, by the contractors that did the work. I hate holding on to this, it's almost two years in the, in the, in the, in the, in the making. But I guess at the end of the day, I'm, I'm here to look out for us and, and not for this company, however bad that may sound, but.
Could we retain a portion of that eighty thousand dollars in lieu of making sure that ditch is properly done?
Well, I guess it depends on the language of the contract. You know, most contracts have a retainage, I presume that that's what this is. But then at some point, if the contractor says the project is done, give me my retainage, uh, then the city's got to have some, you know, valid reason for continuing to hold on to it. I suppose we could, i- if I understood your question, uh, at some point, we could say to them, well, we'll give you part of it, but we're still holding on to part of it for this particular issue.
I mean, I, I just hate this, hold on to eighty thousand dollars for five, six, seven months or whatever. But I see your point where we want to make sure the water runs downhill, we don't have standing water and cattails and.
Especially when it didn't.
Right.
It didn't have that problem before, and I would think that William Mueller and Sons would, would at least want to stand close to behind that.
Well, I, I, I guess, what I, I could see as a, a compromise is if, um, I'm willing to make the payment as long as they're willing to stand behind this, that they're going to remedy that issue, if that, that is an issue. Specifically talking about that.
The only problem is, once you pay it all, you don't have any leverage on it all.
Right, so I guess I don't know how to, um, approach that, then.
I think we could, that could be answered if we could get a yes or no as to whether that would be covered in that two-year warranty.
I mean, if, if that's covered in the two-year warranty, I'm, I will make a motion that we make the final payment. That can be my motion, to make the payment if that ditch is covered underneath their warranty. If it's not, then retain the payment, yeah, until further discussion.
Till next meeting.
Till further discussion.
Till next meeting.
So your motion is you'd make the payment providing, or a motion to pay the payment, providing that that particular area is covered under their two-year warranty?
Correct, that's the motion.
Are you seconded?
I seconded, yeah.
Okay. Any other discussion? We can discuss more after I read the motion. A motion is by council member Batchra, second by council member Highland, to, um, make the requested balance of payment of, I should put in the dollar amount, eighty thousand, seven hundred and eighty-four dollars and seventy-four cents. Contingent upon the fact that the, um, troubled issue near the Senex service station is covered under the two-year warranty from the contractor. Any further discussion? If not, on favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. Motion carried. Okay, um, moving on to item eleven, accept or deny potential annexation memorandum from city engineer Jason Femrite.
Again, I was going to lean on city attorney Artisan to give a little background on this discussion and as to why the city is considering extending the annexation boundary area before we go into the memorandum.
First of all, the background, uh, under state law, uh, municipality can, uh, with the, uh, municipality can, with the, uh, cooperation of the surrounding government units, which in our case is Arlington Township and Civilly County, put together a long-term agreement under which, uh, we try to project out what, uh, uh, shape the city might be in the future. And, um, so we, we draw boundaries and the current annexation, uh, uh, agreement is the blue boundary. The idea is that, um, uh, at the time the agreement is entered into, the township and the county sign off on that so that it, uh, makes it a relatively smooth process for the city to conduct annexations within that blue box. We have, uh, an orderly annexation agreement in place and have for many years, and we have, in fact, conducted a number of annexations within the box. Uh, our current orderly annexation agreement, uh, with the township and county is due to expire. And so the issue came up, do we want to put together a new one or just let it expire? If we want to put together a new one, then, uh, it has been suggested that we, uh, uh, expand the boundary to the yellow area. Uh, this would, among other things, take in our current, uh, uh, city, uh, uh, septic system plant and dump site. And also give us some additional expansion room. Uh, in order to put together an orderly annexation agreement, we do need to get the township and county to sign off. Now, what if they don't? Well, if they don't, then we don't have an orderly annexation agreement. Does that mean we can't annex? No. In that case, we just fall back on, uh, regular annexation procedure, where, uh, we decide from time to time if it's appropriate to annex a certain parcel to the city. If we do, the procedure includes notifying the township and the county of that, and they have the ability to file an objection. The, uh, uh, state has the final authority to say whether an annexation goes forward or not. And, uh, through, uh, long history, it appears that the state, uh, fairly routinely will, uh, approve any city annexation, even over the objection of a township or a county, uh, as long as the city meets certain minimum, uh, uh, conditions. Typically, it has to be contingent to the existing city boundaries. We have to be able to show that, uh, we can, uh, uh, service that new area in a, in a reasonable period of time with city services, sewer, water, in our case, electric. And that the, uh, uh, proposed annexation area is logical. In other words, it, it appears to be an area that, uh, uh, would make sense for the city to expand out to. So, uh, with that understanding, it's not that it's a desperate situation in any way, that we enter into a new orderly annexation agreement, uh, with the township and the county. If we get the job done, it just makes things a little simpler in the future if we want to annex. But without that agreement, we certainly can still proceed with annexations if needed. The other comment to this is that, uh, to my knowledge, Arlington historically has never annexed, uh, any parcel unless the majority of the landowners in that area have consented to it. Uh, we've never forced an annexation, in other words, on, on landowners. That doesn't mean we can't, it's just, you know, historically, that's been our policy. And the prime example of that is the Burner Edition, as we call it, which is in the, uh, you know, north of the lumberyard there. Uh, it's called that because Mr. Burner was the guy that originally owned that land and planted it out. And, uh, it's called the Burner Edition, but it is not in city limits, it's not an addition to the city. It's just kind of a slang term for identifying that area. And the city's policy in the past, and we've done this, I think, at least a couple of times that I know of, is we would poll the residents out there, and, uh, we're looking for, uh, a majority to say, yes, we now want to be annexed. And, uh, I think one time we came close, but didn't quite get there, so we didn't annex them. Again, that's been the historical policy of the city, but it's not anything that future councils are bound by. You know, we can force an annexation if we feel that, uh, you know, it's a, a pressing need of the city. Now, we can acquire land outside city limits. Uh, good examples are septic, uh, treatment plant, uh, the dump site, and the sportsman's park. Those are city-owned, but they're outside city limits. Okay, so. Questions?
How long is a orderly annexation, uh, agreement usually last?
Uh, I think that they have them now as a standard ten years. I haven't looked at that recently. Cynthia Smith-Strack has been basically putting this together, uh, but that's my recollection. I think it was, uh, uh, I think our old one was longer.
I think it was longer than.
Yes, it was, but I think that was one of the things that they changed at the state. I think they cut it down to a maximum of ten years.
I wonder if it was twenty.
If the previous.
That could well have been, yes.
It was nineteen ninety-eight.
Yeah.
It expires in August of, oh, of eighteen.
You're right, you're right, exactly right, it was twenty years.
So I know in planning and zoning, we've talked a little bit about, you know, it doesn't need to be a square box. You know, it, it doesn't need to be this size, it can go all the way to Green Isle if we wanted to. This just, I know when we talked, it just seemed fair to go a little bit bigger than what, what we were. Just to kind of make room and seem that it's an extended contract, it's not a contract of like a couple of years or five, six years, but longer that, that it makes more sense, you never know what's going to happen. And then we can just control what happens more in that area. So when people want to add a shed, or when they want to, uh, you know, dri- driveways, I mean, a lot of our ordinance kind of apply, right?
Yes, well, good point, I didn't cover that. The, the other purpose of the orderly annexation is a very important one, uh, as Councilmember Batchra just mentioned. Within the orderly annexation area, even though we have annexed the land, uh, the city can assume zoning control. And the theory behind that is, for example, if we think, uh, well, uh, here's a logical growth area for residential development. Well, we don't want, uh, a hog confinement facility to suddenly appear in the middle of that. Because then that, you know, circumscribes the city's ability to develop in a, in a logical, uh, area. And so that was part of the orderly annexation, uh, laws, uh, that the state has, that, um, within that, for example, the proposed yellow boundary, uh, we could exert zoning control, and the township and the county would no longer have that control. Now, interestingly, our old, you know, twenty-year, uh, orderly annexation ordinance allowed for that, but the city never did it. And, uh, it was, it was kind of a practical difficulty that, uh, at that time, we didn't have, uh, uh, you know, a zoning administrator or, or, you know, the staff to handle that kind of thing. And I think also politically, past councils didn't want to be out there telling farmers what they could or couldn't do, you know, on their farm site, uh, you know, within the orderly annexation boundaries. So although we had that powered under the old, uh, orderly annexation, uh, agreement, uh, the city didn't exercise it. But again, that doesn't mean we couldn't exercise it going forward.
Is everything that's currently out there, um, pretty much grandfathered in?
In what respect?
Well, I mean, for the, you know, if there's a driveway that's on a.
Oh, yes, yes, yes. And, uh, uh, you know, i- issues can come up where, um, uh, you know, as you say, things can be grandfathered in, but once it's under city zoning control, um, uh, we can put a sunset provision in. For example, um, if the, uh, you know, building was destroyed by accident, it can't be rebuilt. Or, um, it hasn't, you know, a certain depreciation life, and after that has expired, you know, so many years, uh, then it has to be removed.
Or if you're going to make improvements on it, you have to conform to the new, new standards, so.
So it's kind of a transition, it can be a very long transition process, but, you know.
Um, I did like, uh, planning and zoning member Cruff's idea, um, in regards to the Burner Edition, because that's been, I think, the, the one spot that either wants to come in or doesn't want to come in, or they're flip-flopping and stuff, and has to put a date on. If a date would be a good thing to throw on, um, along with this, for, for that specific area. It would help with them planning as far as their septic systems and their wells and such. So I guess I'm wondering thoughts on the council, what they think about that? Or if that would be something that would be discussed with the county, if there's going to be maybe, or township. Or is, if there's going to be some discussion before a proposal being brought to them.
I think we're looking for right now is just, um, accept Jason Femrite's memorandum pertaining to the orderly annexes.
The utilities.
So the planning and zoning committee, as you can see, they proposed in that yellow, they proposed in extending the city's limits of the annexation boundary area. And then consultant Cynthia Smith-Strack forwarded that information to our city engineer just to ask him if the city were to extend its boundaries and annex all that property, could we even appropriately provide water and sewer? So as you can see in his, um, in his memo, it is fairly positive. He does state that it could be some future minor development, um, with regard to additional upgrades to our water storage as well as ongoing review of our wastewater treatment system and continued reduction in INI to improve efficiencies within the wastewater structure. So it is a possibility.
We just learned today that the wastewater plan. I think we just learned today that the wastewater plant is good, if we develop that whole area, so we should be good there.
We could probably take on part of Minneapolis.
We'd probably have to put up a new water tower, but as far as the wastewater, we'd be good.
Just have to watch the INI.
So I think what we're looking for is, I mean, there's unofficially been some, a date set with the township to ask them whether they are, would be in favor of entering into discussions about a new orderly annexation area. And that is, I believe, February thirteenth?
Correct.
Yeah, February thirteenth. So we certainly wouldn't want to bring them an idea that later, or that this group would not feel comfortable with, as far as boundaries are concerned. Because I'm sure they'll have some questions, you know, as far as why, why did these, I think basically the idea was a half, half a mile to the east from where the current boundary is, and a quarter mile to the south from where the current boundary is. According to my measurements, that's about, and I think I remember committee member Kraft suggesting that everyone was in agreement at that time, planning and zoning. So...
Well, I think for us, you know, it, going to the east, you know, it touches with the Sportsman's Park, which is our property.
Mm-hmm.
And...
Doesn't quite get there.
With the new proposed, right?
No, it actually goes in, it, the boundary is right where that driveway that goes into Brow's to the Danielson. So it's probably about a quarter, quarter mile away from the Sportsman's Park yet.
I've got this upside down.
No, no, it's close right to Sportsman's Park.
Nope, Sportsman's Park is...
That's a softball field there.
Yeah, but isn't this city right here?
It may hit the edge of the Sportsman's Park, the west boundary, but it doesn't encompass the whole, the whole property.
Right, but no, it would, yeah, hit the line.
It, yeah, okay.
That's what I, I didn't say that it takes in, well, I didn't mean that it is taking in.
No, it does not, does not include the entire Sportsman's Park. It goes to the, pretty much west.
But I mean, you know, we could take that in, because it's our property at that point, right?
Right.
It would make sense.
Could we make a jog in that boundary to include the Sportsman's Park?
Or wouldn't we have to, being it's already here?
We don't have to, yeah. The city can own property outside city limits. So I'm not sure if there's any real advantage in bumping it out to there.
I mean, you just talked about the jog from Freedom, Freedom Drive down to Sportsman's Park and then back south.
On the other hand, there's no reason not to.
Just a thought.
Yeah.
Yeah. Regarding the meeting with the township to see if they have interest in pursuing discussions, how does the council want to, want to approach that? Few representatives from the council meet with the township, or I don't think we need to come in with the full council, really. I guess my thought would be Cynthia Smith-Strack, maybe council member Batch, who also serves on planning and zoning, and city administrator Donna Bauer and myself, four of us, just to see what that interest is. Is that okay with everyone else?
Yep.
Okay?
Do we need a motion or anything to that effect, or consensus or a motion?
Consensus. We do need a motion on...
On accepting.
Accepting the memorandum, and then...
Make a motion that we accept the potential annexation memorandum from city engineer Jason Philmott. And can I add that the mayor appoint representatives to meet with the township on February thirteenth?
I'll second your motion.
Motion by council member Highland, second by council member Batch, to accept the potential annexation memorandum from city engineer Jason Philmott. And that would authorize the mayor to appoint a group to meet with the Arlington Township Board. Any more discussion? If not, on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carried. At this time, then I will name council member Batch, Cynthia Smith-Strack, city administrator Donna Bauer, and myself to that group. All right. Move on to updates from 2017 Street Utility Improvement Open House that was held on January tenth.
Last week, the city held its open house with regard to the 2017 Street Utility Improvement project. Despite the terrible weather, we did have eight residents come and provide commentary. It was a good turnout in the eyes of our city engineers. We had Jason Philmott and Derek Olinger there from Bolton and Mink, who are obviously here for our 2015 project, and they received comments regarding everything from the assessment amount to sidewalks, to removal of trees, received some great feedback on whether the nine-ton road that's on Alden, if that needs to continue to be a nine-ton road, considering that sandstone is no longer going to be in our downtown area. Heard comments or answered questions about, you know, extending a driveway apron, alleyway improvements, all that kind of good stuff. So it was really a good back and forth, there were easels set up with sections of each of those streets up and open, so that the resident could get in close and kind of take a peek at what's being proposed. As you can see, we included a copy of our notes from that evening, all three of us were taking notes, and those were brought back to the office and will be incorporated into the design or brought back to this council for further discussion. But also, just an update to Bolton and Mink, they did a great job on communicating with our residents on the last project. They provided weekly written communications in the form of a newsletter. They also fielded all phone calls, so I really didn't hear a whole lot of complaints from our residents. They, Bolton and Mink did a great job with that. So this project, they are just adding another form of communication by having a project website specifically for this project, and I took a look at it the other day, and includes drawings, it includes the construction schedule and all that kind of good stuff. So it's worth checking out, and they assured me that they continue to, continue on with their other forms of communication.
Yeah, I like the website that they have, or the page that they have up there for us.
What's the name of...
It's in the link. If you touch the link, you can go there.
Okay, is there any questions or any comments regarding the 2017 Street Utility Project?
I just did have a representative from the Methodist Church stop and visit me today, and they're quite concerned with the assessment on the, on the improvement in the alley adjacent to their parking lot. Excuse me, they, I think as time goes along, we'll probably need to meet with them and see if we can come up with a resolution or resolve some of the issues that they might have. And I think that alleyway is a, is an addition, it's not, wasn't part of the...
No, it was a separate...
But it was something we hoped we could do to alleviate the water issue in that alley and parking lot and the neighbors to the church.
From my understanding, the comments that were made at the open house, there wasn't any argument with the improvement needing to be made, it's with how the cost was going to be.
Who's going to pay for it?
Spread around.
I too was stopped today, and probably the same individual.
I also.
Okay, so they're, they're doing, they're doing it the way it should be done.
He said he was going to go around.
Yeah, good.
Well, at least we're aware of it, and I think it's something that, I don't want it to get lost in the shuffle, but I, I think we need to do something, and if we decide to do nothing, we need to let them know that we'll do the street project, then the alley stays the way it is. But I think this would be a time to fix it.
Well, I mean, if you've seen the alley, I mean, it's in need of repair, period.
I know.
I mean, there's no getting around it, but I mean, the way that we're talking about improving it, turning it to tar, right, is adding on the expense of just leaving it as gravel.
Well, yeah, right, well, putting in a storm sewer drain in the alley and...
But is it needed there? I mean, that's the question. So what we designed, is that needed there?
You mean the tar?
That, well, the drain and everything, yeah.
Well, I guess, where's the water going to go if it doesn't go down?
Right, exactly, so.
Yeah, and I don't, I don't think they're arguing that at all. They know that a lot of that water comes off their parking lot, and it just has nowhere to go, except down.
Right.
That's where we need to prevent it.
So anyhow, I just wanted to bring that up so we were aware of it.
I think we can, you know, we can get together with them and reach a, some type of an agreement. All right. Any other questions regarding the 2017 Street Utility Improvement Project?
I did speak to Ms. Mormon, and she's still concerned, like when she goes to the grocery store, where's she going to leave her car? Because she is using a walker, and if she has to park two blocks away, it will be difficult for her to, but I assure her that the engineer said we will solve the problems, and they will work with her, and, and she just needs to talk to them, and...
Right.
She felt better, but still wasn't sure where, where she was with the whole thing. But I told her, we'll get you taken care of.
Absolutely, that's all we can tell her at this point, and I'm sure the engineers have come across these situations before, where they have to deal with someone that is not as mobile as, as could be, and so. Okay, let's move along then to re-establishment of the County Prairie Line Trail Committee.
So our Prairie Line Trail Committee kind of retired after the installment of the first segment of the Prairie Line Trail, Prairie Line Trail, which as you know, leads from the city of Arlington out to Sportsman's Park. It was a great success, but they worked hard for about ten years to get that segment in, and they were tired. So their hope on, when we had that Prairie Line Trail opening, that other excited individuals would step forward and take their place. And we really didn't have a whole lot of people standing up saying, ooh, pick me, pick me. So it's just, the topic has died. And with the talk of the medical school being potentially built in Gaylord, it's gotten a lot of our surrounding communities thinking about what they should be doing to make their community a livable community. And so Winthrop had contacted me and asked, what can we do to get that Prairie Line Trail out to Winthrop? So I provided a history of what I knew about the Prairie Line Trail. We met with county administrator Roxy Traxler, as well as the Sibley County Public Works Director, Tim Becker, who was a part of the design process on the Prairie Line Trail. And he was able to provide a little bit of a background as well. There was a comprehensive plan that included segments or alternates to this trail. It's a pretty thick document, which I did not include in your council packets, I just tried to keep it brief and simple. But the work, there's a desire for the work to continue, and obviously, it would involve all of our communities, not just Winthrop and not just Arlington. So this topic will be brought up again at that semi-annual municipality meeting on Thursday the twenty-sixth. But in the meantime, there is a meeting that is scheduled for Thursday, February ninth, at seven PM of the Prairie Line Trail Committee. At that meeting will be some of the existing members of that committee, just to kind of give a little background and a blessing to turn it over to another group. But county administrator Roxy Traxler was asking that we go back to each of our councils and ask for our councils to point or delegate or send somebody to represent our community. So I'm bringing that before you now. I don't know if it would be members of this group, if it would be a separate group, if it would be members from our Parks Committee. I know the county had talked about they were keeping their parks and their trails committees separate, so.
Okay.
Just looking for some feedback. We do have a Parks Committee meeting next Monday, so I was going to bring this information to them as well.
Well, I know when this, this Prairie Line Trail first got started, it was a couple of members from each community, and it was, the members were pulled from the park boards. I don't, not sure about other communities, but I know here. So I, I could see our park committee, one or two members from our park committee going and being involved. I guess that would be my, my suggestion.
There might be somebody in the community that has a real passion for trails, too, if we go, yeah, find that, that person or persons.
Mm-hmm. So if you can think of somebody that you see on the trail a lot, Michelle.
Oh, yeah, I'm right there, when I'm there.
Run out and see if you can recruit them. Well, not now, but...
Yeah, it's closed.
I know, it's closed.
Right now.
Yeah. Okay, so any, any ideas on the Prairie Line Trail Committee membership would be, you know, forward those on to city administrator Donna Bauer, and something going on that, hopefully. All right, any other questions on that? If not, we'll move on to mayoral goals. Okay, as in the past, for the two new council members, I will, I have five goals here, I will read the goals, and it's not for those of you that are present necessarily, but for those that might be watching on TV, that they know what the goals are and who is going to be assigned. I will be assigning a goal to each of the council members, and what that means is, the goal that's assigned to you, sort of keep an eye on it, make sure it's moving, be concerned about it probably more than, you know, your fellow council members, and if we want an update, we'll go to you for an update. How is the, how is the goal coming that was assigned to you? And I ask for updates midway through the year. That way, if there's some reason that things aren't moving along as quickly as possible, we can do something about it. But I would invite you to be in communication with city administrator Donna Bauer in regard to how the particular goals are moving forward throughout the year. So I am going to read these, I'll try and get through them fast, but I also want them out as far as those people that might be watching on TV. The goals this year are as follows, 2017 mayoral goals. Goal number one, and this one will be assigned to Adam Cowell. Complete the renovation of the senior citizens building at Four Seasons Park. With the awarding of a funding grant from Lions International and the generous matching funds from the city of Arlington and both Arlington and Green Isle Lions organizations, the remodeling project is scheduled to begin early this spring. The community can look forward to a revitalized building with new restrooms, kitchen improvements, new four-star heating and cooling system, a new ceiling surface, new lighting, new entry doors, and additional windows to allow for increased natural light. Our senior citizens group, which now uses the building on a weekly basis, will be relocated to another facility during the renovation project. So that one is for you, Adam. Goal number two, move forward with the process of inventorying all trees located on city boulevards and in city parks. This one is going to be assigned to Tim Hatt, or Tom Hattelstedt, excuse me. While the preparedness training component of the tree inventory program has been completed, the tree inventory itself, tree inventory itself remains to be done. With the help of local Boy Scout troop, the city shade tree committee, and community volunteers, each tree, whether it is in the city park or along city boulevard, will be inspected and catalogued. Some trees may not require further attention, some may need a degree of pruning and... Some trees may not require further attention. Some may need a degree of pruning and some will indeed need to be removed. The next phase then will be implementing a replanting program to address areas that for one reason or another are in need of replacement of either boulevard or shade trees. The ultimate goal is to greatly increase the diversity of the city's tree prepare population, I'm sorry, population, which currently is heavily weighted towards maple and ash varieties. This program is being carried out under the guidance and funding of the University of Minnesota Department of Forest Resources. Tom, that one is yours. Uh, goal three, and this one would go to uh, Jim Highland. Begin the construction phase of the twenty seventeen street utility improvement project. After much research into which areas of the city should be considered for a significant tree improvement project, it was decided to move forward with the area directly south of the twenty fifteen project area. Another area of the city under consideration was East Baker Street and East Clinton Street area, which has notice notable storm sewer issues. However, to develop an improvement plan for this area will take a considerable amount of engineering effort to arrive at the best solution for the noted problems. The selected project for twenty seventeen will involve replacement of water, storm sewer and sanitary sewer service, as well as work on some sidewalks, boulevard trees, curb and gutter, and complete street replacement. As in the past, we will need to be sensitive to the affected property owner concerns relating to the sidewalk and driveway work, as well as necessary tree removal and replacement. Concurrent work on the west uh, west side of Sibley East School project will also need to be taken into consideration. Mr. Highland, that one is yours.
All right. I get my shovel and hard hat ready.
Uh, goal number four, this one is for Ben. Examine all options for delivery of ambulance service as well as fire and police protection. Due to currently being short-staffed in our police department and and facing smaller than desired numbers in our fire department and our ambulance service, we are in a position to examine these areas of vital community services to determine if we can reach out to neighboring communities experiencing similar deficiencies in an attempt to realign or share any of these services. The shortage of ambulance personnel with availability during daytime hours in small communities such as ours needs to be addressed with innovative changes. Similarly, we, with many of our firefighters being employed outside the local area during the normal workday, it becomes difficult for them to respond when a call goes out. Retention of police officers in small communities will always be an issue. We will examine any feasible means of delivering law enforcement that is in accordance with our city charter and does does not compromise the safety and well-being of our residents. Ben, that's yours. And lastly, take a fresh look at Arlington's economic development efforts, and this one is Michelle's. With the consulting assistance of recently contracted Municipal Development Group and the expertise and energy of an experienced E D A committee, it is time to take a look at the entire scope of our economic economic development efforts. I am urging our economic development committee to focus on the following areas. Selling the former T S E building, assistance in finalizing the access route to Southwest Industrial Park, identifying the need for future housing developments and potential locations of such, brainstorming potential uses for soon-to-be vacant downtown Semstone site, and determining potential future uses for all vacant city-owned properties. It is imperative that the business retention visits with members of our current business community routinely take place as they are, as those members are vital asset and deserve any assistance we can offer to retain and hopefully expand their current activity. Those are the goals. And I guess did we in the past have a motion to approve and accept? No, we don't need that. All right. Then we'll move on to miscellaneous business, the police department update, interim chief Voight. Come forward, please.
You wanna make sure you turn on your microphone too, please?
All right. I don't know how I'm gonna follow up with that speech, but I'll try. So just a little bit about our police department, we're like uh, um, we are down right now, so it's kind of hard. We're doing as best as we can to have as much coverage around the town as we possibly can. Um, with that being said, what we've been doing at the police department is um, we've been reorganizing the police department. We've been um, we've had stuff in there since the nineteen eighties and stuff like that, so we've been kind of getting all of our police department stuff up to date and getting it more organized, so not thumbing through a bunch of papers and wasting time on finding our information that we need. Um, with that being said, we have a key addition that Vicki, for our police administrator, uh, she came over and I am gonna be throwing a lot of stuff at her this year. She is gonna be taking on a huge load from me, um, paperwork. She says she wants it. So I am giving her full reins on the paperwork so that I can be out more with the community and being out more visible and talking business owners and stuff like that. So with that being said, Vicki is gonna be taking over our reports, so like the monthly reports that you guys get in your packets. She's gonna be doing all those and then she's just gonna be basically saying, hey, you approve this and then we're going from that way. Also, we're gonna be doing annual reports now. So uh, I know the city of Arlington, our residents like to see what we're doing out there. We're not just sitting in the office and doing nothing. We're actually out doing stuff. Seeing our calls, how many I C Rs were created. Um, this year, if we were at a full staff of three, we would have been over three thousand I C Rs, which is the most that Arlington's ever seen. This year, we are over twenty-seven, close to twenty-eight hundred, which is the most Arlington's ever seen. So it keeps on going up and up and that varies from park checks to D U Is to domestics to anything. Um, also Vicki's gonna be taking on M O C codes, so with with all those I C Rs that are created, there's also a code that has to get submitted to the B C A so the B C A knows and documents what we're doing then out here. And she has to go back all the way to twenty twelve when our L A T G system um, was implemented into the city. Um, they haven't been doing M O C codes. So that's Vicki's number one priority is to get the M O C codes done, so then we're up to date with the B C A. And that's gonna be taking her basically eight hours of her shift, five days a week to get us up to date. And also we have, you know, filing cameras of reports and stuff like that, so she's gonna be um, scanning those all in, so then they're all um, on the computer and stuff when we get our scanner and stuff like that. So she's gonna be busy with that. Um, also, uh, quick note, our squad update. Our squad is gonna be in at the end of this month and we're gonna get it shipped out to get it set up. Once we get it set up, we'll get the graphics on and I'll be here. So hopefully, fingers crossed, mid-February, our new squad will be up and running, which is a perfect thing. And then we'll take care of the other business and also with the old squad. Um, also with trainings, uh, every three years, we have to have forty-eight hours of continuing education, so we have to go to trainings. We're not just, you know, get done with school and we're done with our trainings. If you're not learning something every time you go out there every year, you should be out of this profession. So with that being said, we've been going to trainings. We just had a Mankato conference. Me and Officer Ravinsky went down to Mankato for two days and they had a variety of topics stemming from um, social media um, to responsive fire calls, um, welfare checks, all that stuff. We had city attorney or the county attorney of Hennepin come down and talk to us about some cases. And there was two other uh, speakers that came and talked to us about cases. So it was very well informative down there. Also, myself went to um, in November, I went to an S F S T course slash A R I D course, which that is, A R I D is advanced, advanced roadside impairment driving enforcement. So there's not, it's not just drinking and driving with alcohol anymore. It's more medication stuff and you're seeing a lot more methamphetamine and all that stuff coming out this way. So I just want to be well-prepared for that, so I can help the citizens of Arlington with that. Also, just recently, just this past week, I also got a Taser instructor. I went to Savage Police Department and I went there for two days and I am a Taser instructor now, so I can help out other communities. I can um, help out other departments if they need a Taser instructor, so I can do that now. Um, also, I just wanted to address our snow parking. I know we've been having calls and complaints about our snow parking issues. Um, just want to reaffirm that it's a two hours you have to remove your vehicle if there's two inches or more. If you don't remove it, then it is twelve hours to move the vehicle or else it's gonna be towed. So if we get a call from city streets saying that this one hasn't moved, they will be issued a ticket. We take pictures, so then we know if they moved or not. And if they didn't move within those twelve hours, their vehicle is gonna be towed. So I just want to make that very clear to everybody, to the citizens of Arlington and stuffs, because it's Minnesota weather. We're gonna have more snow. We're gonna have more of this stuff. Um, with that being said too, also the driving conditions, make sure we're, you know, you hear it all the time, make sure we're leaving early and we're driving safe on the roads, because I don't want to be going to accidents and rollovers and seeing people that I know in those vehicles. Um, last thing too, is um, our suspicious activities have been going up. So you've seen people out look, walking around cars, checking cars out, or if, you know, they're in the park after hours. Um, anything that just doesn't feel right to you, if you see something, call us or call the sheriff's office and we will respond to those. So. If you have any questions, I would answer them if you have any.
I see there's a few places where it's assisting other agencies. What might, what might that be? Give us an example.
Yep, so assisting other agencies, we could be going to uh, calling Gaylord or helping out the county. If they request us, we go and assist them. Other than that, assisting is basically this past month, it's been a lot of background checks. So we do a lot of background checks for the fire department or we do background checks for um, the library or something like that. That's basically a lot of the assisting other agencies.
Okay. Do you typically um, uh, go to fire calls? If there's a fire call goes out, are you also going out to maybe direct traffic or?
Correct, yep. If there's a fire call, we're we're gonna show up just in case if there, if the fire department needs us to block off traffic. Or usually, if there's a fire, we're usually the first ones to respond because we're always on. So then we assess the situation. If there's, you know, people inside or whatnot, then you gotta do what you gotta do, but we're usually the first ones there. And then once the fire department gets there, we step back and let them do, do their thing.
Okay.
And we just want to make, I guess there's some confusion as to whether the police department was was responding to fire calls or not. Um, I think we just want to, we were concerned about it that, you know, make sure that if there's a fire call and you know they're going on Highway seven or on Highway five that go out and kind of direct traffic, just slow the traffic down so the fire trucks could get out.
Well.
Or do you head right to the fire?
We head right to the fire and that's why fire trucks have sirens and lights. They can turn those on and you know, traffic should be yielding to, you know, the sirens and the lights. Because when I throw on my lights to pull somebody over or go to a call, you know, I don't have anybody directing traffic for me, so I basically am observant of all, everybody else. Turn on my lights, turn on my sirens, and then that's when they should be yielding to me. But if there's a fire call, I usually go there. I'm the first one there usually, so.
Okay, good. How about ambulance calls? Treat that the same way? That if there's an ambulance call and, or don't you even, you hear those come in, don't you?
Correct, yep.
Would you respond then?
Yep, I I usually respond to ambulance calls unless it's kind of like to the good Sam or something like that. If it's just a transport or something, I usually don't respond to those because they usually don't need me there, but if it's an actual medical, we respond to those also.
Good.
Uh, you mentioned the I C R account. Uh, maybe you could explain to the council what an I C R is?
So an I C R is, basically, it can be created many different ways. A dispatch call, a call from a citizen, or just you being proactive out in the community. Um, so if like dispatch calls, they, it's a nine-one-one call and it's a domestic, you get dispatched to that. That pops up on our screen and that creates an incident, so then um, we go back and we look at the numbers and you put in people, places and all that stuff, so we can track out everything. Um, that's just like a phone call from a citizen. If if I made contact with anybody, I talked to anybody basically regarding, you know, business, basically, I create an I C R and that's so then I can show that I'm actually doing something. And um, with the, with that too being said, going out and doing park checks. You know, so I can come back to you guys saying, you know, I'm doing park checks. You know, this is the times, nothing, everything was good, but then all of a sudden something happens later on. Well, then you can narrow down the time, so it's a good timeframe incident too with those I C Rs.
Does that stand for something, I C R?
Uh, incident crime reporting, I believe.
And then, do you know what the M O C stands for, M O C codes?
Oh.
I think it's misdemeanor offense code.
Yep.
It's a way that the state, well, yeah, basically the state uh, and the court system uh, keep statistics on what kinds of crimes are happening and.
Yep. Because you got the part one, part two crimes and that's how they delegate of what's going on in the city and in the state.
And that's the statistics, I thought, did I hear this maybe incorrectly? Those statistics, statistics can be used for grant funding if you guys were to look into programs in the future?
Correct, you can use those for grants. It 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 just re, you know, it backs your requests of grants and stuff like that, so then you can show them numbers saying, this is the reason why we need this grant.
Looks like there's a few areas of town that have some consistent parking violations. I'm guessing that was after a snowfall.
Yep.
Back to the same area numerous times. Okay. And I do see the one on here that I phoned into you, so thank you for that.
You're welcome.
I was uh, I was ringing the bell at the grocery store and somebody came up to me and didn't wish me a Merry Christmas. They were a little bit irate that there was a truck that was parked there and it hadn't been moved for what they felt was an excessive amount of time and uh, so I called uh, interim chief Voight and he got right on it and uh, I drove past there the next day and it was gone, so. Didn't have to ask what happened to it and I didn't care. Okay, any other questions for Officer?
Very good report.
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, we'll uh, move into item sixteen, council committee updates. Uh, Streets Committee. Someone want to talk about the county seventeen bridge?
Well, we met with um, I guess, oh, Gaylord isn't here anymore. Can't blame him.
No.
We met with uh, excuse me, Tim Becker um, December twenty-second to discuss the bridge on uh, County Road Seventeen, uh, which would be um, right near the subway. And uh, the bridge is, I think, scheduled to be replaced
Yeah, okay.
eighteen or nineteen, two thousand eighteen, nineteen, depending on funding. Um, it looks like it's gonna be a great bridge. Obviously, we have, we have some pictures here of it. Um, they're gonna widen the road from the railroad tracks to Highway five. I think it'd make it forty, forty feet wide, which would accommodate
Forty-four.
Um, eight-foot shoulders, I believe, on each side and twelve-foot of roadway for each uh, east and west traffic. Um, we we talked about bike lanes, uh, bike paths, so forth. Uh, and I think as we just left it, we're gonna leave the, the um, eight-foot on either side for parking, pedestrian traffic and bike traffic. So I guess once you start designating a bike lane, then you have to designate parking areas and it just wouldn't work on that street. So I think what uh, what was proposed or what we're looking at is gonna be very adequate and I think it'll serve the purpose very well. Getting traffic uh, down County Road Seventeen.
I think we were amazed in uh, talking to Tim Becker, the traffic flow on that road. Twenty-one hundred cars a day, I think it is. 2,100 cars a day, I think it is. Yeah, just, I would have never guessed that much traffic on that, that stretch.
Is this stretch in yellow?
I think it, yeah, I don't know where they started measuring, but, you know, but.
That's amazing.
Yep, it is.
Which is why we could not have a dedicated bike trail, according to state regulations. So they're, that's why there's going to be those eight-foot wide shared bike pedestrian parking area.
I'll bet it will even, with Dollar General out there, it'll even grow.
We had, we're still also keeping in mind that reducing the speed limit on Highway five, asking for the state to look at that. There's really nothing that the county is going to be doing at the time they upgrade the road that will make crossing Highway five any easier for pedestrians. But hopefully, we could get the county's support if we do approach, or when we do approach the, the state to hopefully lower the speed limit a little bit.
Well, they build the road up, so it's not such a hill.
They are going to, are you talking about when it goes, where you go over the railroad tracks? Yeah. That'll take that, it'll slope down.
Getting onto Highway five, too, there's a.
They are raising it a little bit.
But I mean, if they raise it too much, I mean, you're going to come down into,
Into the,
Senex or,
They probably can't change the grade a whole lot because of their approach to, to the gas station.
Tim talked about at the railroad tracks, they're going to flatten that out. And then when they get down to the subway, the quick trip, the quick stop, they're going to, it'll be pretty much the level it is now.
The whole thing's kind of in a bowl shape.
And they're going to have a right turn lane in,
That'll help.
On the Highway five lane.
North. Okay, any questions on that bridge update? If not, we'll talk about the fire committee meeting. Adam, this is yours.
All right.
I'll be out if you need it.
Sounds good. On the 11th, we all met with, I think there was six or eight firefighters here, all different years. Discussed lots of ideas on retention and recruitment. There wasn't really a consensus. I think their butt is lost, as, you know, everybody else is. Talked money, didn't seem to be a factor to any of the ones at least that were here. You know, they have a problem with daytime. There's a lack of people in town, as we all know. Hopefully, they were hoping for eventually with more jobs in town that they'll give more people during the day. Guess, if you've got anything to add.
I think one of the things that they were concerned about was the, the percentage of calls, which we pretty much took care of tonight. Moving it from 25% requirement to 20%. That seemed to be a, a pretty big issue with them. I know we sure discussed a lot of ideas as to, I don't even want to throw anything out there, because, but I think we gave the, I guess my, my, my concern was, what does the fire department want? What can we do for them? I think I mentioned that we as a council, or me as a person, could come up with great ideas and cram it down their throat, and they're not going to like it. So I think we kind of gave them the task to go back to the fire department, discuss what would make them happy, what they're looking for, and then bring that to the, to the committee that we can bring to the council and go from there. So hopefully they'll,
Is that so much the issue as giving new people on?
I think, yeah, new people, one of the things with the training that's involved when a firefighter comes on, you know, they're looking the first six months of two nights a week. I think 100 and some hours of,
160 hours, I think, with the,
160 hours of training, become a full-fledged firefighter. And then after that, they have first responder classes also. And you take a young married person, man or woman, and to do that kind of a commitment, that's a big commitment for any individual.
They have like two years to complete the training.
Right.
So it's not like they have to do it in six months, but.
But they can't do anything until the training is done.
They, they can't go on calls or anything?
That's what they, from what I understand, that's what they said.
I think they can only participate to the degree of what they've, what their training is allowed.
They can still go to calls. They just, yeah, can only do or participate in what they've been trained in.
So, I mean, it's a big commitment. So one of the things was getting new people in. And the other concern was retention of current firefighters. The younger guys that were there were concerned. They didn't want to lose the old timers, because that's their, those are their trainers. They're the ones that are going to teach the young firefighters how to. Even though you go to school, you don't learn at all. It's a lot of on-the-job training and.
There was some real sincere concern for that from, from the young ones, that they don't want to see the, the experienced ones retire.
I think they said there was 13 that are close, that could leave relatively soon.
And how big is our department at?
I think 20, what did it say, 26 or 25, 26?
So that's over half of our, or about half of our.
So I mean, there was talk from additional pay per hour to,
Bonuses.
Bonuses for, sign-on bonuses for completing school.
Or longevity bonuses to,
Years of service, whatever.
Years of service, that, that.
So I mean, there's a lot of things, and I, and I hope, this will go back to the fire.